Good evening. It is three minutes after seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, November 23rd, 2015. All select people, selectmen are present this evening. And if I could ask everyone to rise with me and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We do have Treasury warrants to approve, 20A, 21, and 21A. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion is made?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? We do have minutes to approve as well, the minutes of September 28th, October 13th, and October 26th. We could take them up individually or as a group, however you folks would like to proceed.
I move to approve all of the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Going to our appointments, our seven o'clock appointment is with Karen Rassus, our Principal Assessor. It's a public hearing for the discussion of local property tax policy with reference to the classification. Hi Karen. Good evening. Join us.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're here this evening to discuss in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to present information to the Board of Selectmen so that you may determine the percentages of the tax levy to be paid by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2016. The selectman must vote a residential factor, which will determine the percentage of the tax levy to be allocated and paid by the residential property tax owners. After careful analysis and review, the Board of Assessors recommends to the Board of Selectmen is a classification of 175 percent shift, which would result in a minimum residential factor of .771885 for fiscal year 2016. This shift conforms with the guidelines of Prop. 2.5 and is consistent with prior year's tax policies of the Board. Adoption of this recommendation allows the town to assess and collect an equitable amount of tax from residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. This year was a recertification year for the town. That occurs every three years, and the proposed assessed values were based on calendar year 2014 sales data. Our analysis resulted in an average single-family residential property value increase of approximately 3.5 percent. And the average is calculated simply as a guideline, and that's not, there are some properties that go up above and some below, but that's what the average bill was. Traditionally, the Board of Selectmen have shifted the maximum allowable to the commercial, industrial, and personal property class, and that's the recommendation of the Board of Assessors this evening. I'd like to go through the packet with you and explain that further. And at the conclusion of the hearing, there needs to be a vote, and then there's a form to sign that gets submitted to the Department of Revenue along with our tax rate. So on the next page, we have the Wilmington values comparing, I'm sorry, I'm on the, is everybody with me? I'm on the third page. The Wilmington values, just a comparison to show you what happened with property values this year in comparison to fiscal year 15. The residential class increased from 2.8 million to 2.9, which was roughly a 3.9 percent increase. The residential class isn't just the single family. That also includes apartments, condos, two and three families, vacant land. The commercial class went from 150,899,351 to 158,328,364 dollars, which was a 4.9 percent increase. The industrial class, as you can see, went from 627,746,746 to 637,708,672, which was about a 1.59 percent increase. And our personal property class went from 96 million to 99 million, and that was about a 2.6 percent increase. Our total property value this year is at $3,839,715,204, which overall is a 3.56 percent increase in property values. On the next page, this will take the property values and break it down into what percentage they pay of the tax levy. And the fiscal year 2016 tax levy of $72,777,482, the residential value in at 2.9 million, at no shift, makes up 76.6781 percent of the levy. If you were to shift 175 percent, like you have in the past, then they would only be, their share of the total would be 59.1868 percent. Commercial, industrial, and personal property value makes up $895,493,456, and their combined share is 23.3219 percent, at 100 percent of value. But if you shift, then they would actually pay 40.8133 percent of the tax levy. Last year, you can see at the bottom of the page, the residential shift was 58.6724, and the commercial class made up 41.3276. So the residential increase this year is about .51 percent. On the next page, we have a chart that will show you the impact of your vote for a shift. So if, what this does is we take into consideration, you can shift at any percentage, 1, 110, 120, 121, 22. I just broke it down into 10 percent increments. So if you had no shift at 100 percent, the residential class again makes up the 76.67 percent, commercial 23.32. It would result in a tax rate of 1,895 for both classes of property. That would be a substantial tax increase to the residential homeowner, which would be $1,993.56, while a substantial savings to the commercial taxpayer at a reduction in tax of $9,065.04. If you went to shift to 150 percent, the residential class will then, their share would be 65.017 percent, and the commercial 34.98 percent. The resulting tax rates would be a $16.07 residential rate and a $28.43 commercial rate. Once again, that would be a substantial increase to the residential homeowner of, on the average, $859.87, while the commercial tax would decrease $1,633. If you voted 160 for the percent shift, the residential factor would be 81.7508, and their share would be 62.68 percent, whereas the commercial class would end up paying 37.31 percent. The resulting tax rates, 1549 residential, $30.33 commercial, again a $631 average increase to the residential taxpayer, where it would be $144.50 reduction to commercial. At 170 percent shift, the resulting tax rates would be 1492 for residential and 3222 for commercial. That would be a $407.18 increase on the residential homeowner and a $1,337 increase for the average commercial property. But we, the Board of Assessors is recommending the 175 percent shift, which is a residential factor of 77.1885. In that way, the residential class will make up 59.1868 percent of the levy, and the commercial, industrial, personal property would be 40.8132 percent, resulting in a fiscal year 16 tax rate of $14.63 residential and $33.17 commercial. The average residential bill increasing $293.03, and the average commercial bill increasing You can see down below the average comparison from fiscal year 16 to 15. The fiscal year 16 average assessed value for a single-family home is $393,643 after the revaluation, as compared to last year's $380,374. The average bill would go up if we applied the $14.63 tax rate to $5,759 from the $5,465 last year, which is the $293 increase. The commercial, the average assessed value for fiscal year 16 is $783,879, as compared to last year's $730,591. Again, applying the tax rate of the 3317 at the 175 percent shift, the average commercial bill would be $26,001. The next page is just to give you a little bit of a picture as to what's happened with assessed values over the years. So we show from 2000 to 2016, and I don't want people to think that values are just always going up, going up, going up. We follow the economy and the market and what's happening. So you can see in 2000, the average assessed value was $169,307, and it peaked in 2008, fiscal year 2008, at 402,698. And then you can see it started to go down to 381, 356, 357, 349. So it followed the economic cycle of what was going on with property values and sales. And now we've started to increase inch our way back up. In fiscal year 14, it increased to 258. Last year, we saw a larger increase to 380,000, and this year, the 3.5 percent increase to the 393. We ranked approximately 101 out of the state's cities and towns on last year's average assessed value. I included a chart on the next page, just so you can kind of have a visual and see, you can see how, where values started, how we went up, how we come down, plateaued, and now we're, you know, working our way back up again. On the last page, I wanted to give you a little bit of the history that I'm sure you're all well aware of, but it shows what percentages that the selectmen have voted in the history from 2003 to fiscal year 15, and what the result would be in 16 if you shifted 175 percent. Where it shows down in 2004 that we had shifted 200 percent, that was because there was special legislation. Residential values were increasing more than commercial values. The CIP class was kind of stagnant, so what was happening is residential people were picking up more of the tax burden. So legislation was passed to allow cities and towns to go to the 200 percent, which Wilmington did, and then it was stepped down till we got back to the 175 again in 2008. We've stayed at the 175 percent shift ever since then. If the Board was to vote the 175 percent shift with the tax levy of the 72 million, then we would give us an excess levy capacity of $17,866. So if the Board was to vote again, that residential factor of .771885 results in the shift of the 175 percent, and that's the most favorable scenario for the residential taxpayer, and that's the recommendation of the Board of Assessors this evening.
Thank you very much. Every year, it's a lot of information.
I say, I'm sorry, it's a lot of numbers. That's why I hope this helps as a little bit of a guide.
Yeah, it's certainly helpful to me to see it graphically. It is a public hearing. I'm going to go certainly first to the Board of Selectmen here, and I guess I'll start from the inside out and offer up the opportunity for members of the Board to ask questions or comments. So Lou, I guess I'll start with you.
Thank you, Karen, for coming here tonight, as usual. It's a lot of information to take in for a lot of people. The bottom line is, this is what we can do as Board of Selectmen to affect the property tax value, the property taxes in the town. You get a lot of calls all the time saying that, you know, geez, taxes are always going up, taxes are always going up. There's not much more, other than laying people off as a community, that we could actually, like, save money to better spend the money that we're spending. But I think you got your point across, that people have to understand that this is basically all we can do as selectmen, to transfer the shift to more of the CIP than residential.
Yes. And as on the second to last page, just to point out that last year's average bill was $364 increase, and this year's is $294 increase, so it is down from last year.
Thank you.
I think the points been made, and I'm sure that the rest of the Board will make similar comments as Mr. Smaglia did. I mean, I, for one, am not in favor of cutting any of the services. I don't think we have, you know, a lot of fat in the budget that town meeting adopts year in and year out. And year in and year out, every Board of Selectmen that I can recall, regardless of whether or not I've been sitting here, has voted to maximize the shift in accordance with the highest amount that would be allowed by law at the time. So I know there was that three or four-year window of time where the Board was able to shift it by an even greater percentage or a greater factor. So I suspect I'm in line with my colleagues when I say that I support the recommendation, and that's my intention to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo what my colleagues had to say. I mean, the bottom line is, this Board of Selectmen has always accepted the fact to basically, to pass more of a tax burden to the commercial. I've always wore two hats in this community, as a resident and as a member of the commercial business, and I've always accepted that. Obviously, we've done the best we can. And once again, I believe the town of Wilmington gets a great bang for the buck. We have no use of fees. And I want to touch base, and I told the manager I would sometime down the road, talk about something personal. I was really not too crazy about the recycle program. But what I did immediately for the shot $30, I did get the second barrel. My son Chris does a great job, and I can admit, five of us produce a lot of trash. However, it's working. So for the $30 fee, I think it's a great investment for the recycle relative to the trash. I thought I was going to have to go up, like, a little bit of a use of fee, I said back then, for another barrel for $150 a year, I believe. Don't have to do that. That's only about halfway full every single week. So I can honestly say it's working out great. I think because of that, folks can understand that we do the best we can relative to folks. And I want to let the good folks know, back in 2004, I served here on the Board of Selectmen. When Mitt Romney was governor, we had to have a special vote of the legislature, and I voted the extra tax shift to the commercial. So just want folks out there to know, we took care of you a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of the comments have already been made, but I just wanted to thank you, Karen, for being here in this very detailed, comprehensive presentation. I think the message is clear that tonight we're voting on a tax shift classification, and we're availing ourselves to the maximum opportunity to lighten the load on the residential tax base. And I think, just speaking personally, I'm pleased to see the growth that we've had in town. I think residential tax values have continued to increase. I think it was a great, you know, real estate year in the town of Wilmington this year, and I definitely think the market is continuing to get stronger. I think if you go down any major corridor, Route 38, 129, you're seeing that Wilmington is continuing to grow and build and expand and attract businesses. So I see all of that as a positive contribution to the town, where at the same time, we do have services that we have committed to our residents that they've come to enjoy and, quite frankly, expect. And Wilmington continues to evolve as an upwardly mobile community. So I see all of these things as a positive thing. At the end of the day, it costs money to conduct business and to manage the enterprise of the town, and I'm pleased, you know, obviously, that every year, town meeting sees fit to approve this budget, and it's the will of the people to keep these services going up and to the right. So I'm going to join my colleagues in supporting this maximum tax shift, and I think there's a lot to be proud of in terms of the evolution. If we look at these assessed values, they continue to go up. So residents can at least feel good about the fact that as they're paying taxes in town, that their property values and their investment in their children and their families and their homes is continuing to pay off in parallel to this endeavor. So thank you once again for your time and for your effort, and I look forward to taking the vote.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. That's very much my take on it as well, is that, you know, the upside is, no one likes to have more taxes, but the upside that I take from it as a property owner, as a residential property owner in town, is that my nest egg is growing, and that's a positive for me, because I intend to, you know, stay here for a large number of years, and when it's time to retire or whatever, that property is appreciating in value, and I'm happy to say that. So that's good news. The other side of it is, I just want to be painfully clear here, the average single-family house value is $394,000. I'm rounding.
Rounding, yes.
So the average tax of 293, I'm sorry, the average tax increase this next fiscal year is of $293 is based on that average value. So individual residents will see either more than that or less than that, based on whatever the value is.
Correct.
I don't mean to be overly simplified, but...
No, but no, that's, yes. That's used, the only method that we can is say average, because there are some neighborhoods, certain styles might go up or down more than others, but that is the overall average.
Okay. It's, you have to start somewhere, right? Again, I concur with all of my colleagues' commentaries, and I appreciate that very much. It is a public hearing, so I will at this time open up to questions from the audience. If there's anyone that has comments or questions, now is your time. Not all at once. Very well.
I guess we're doing a great job, right?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Karen. So do I close the public hearing at this time? So with the, the public hearing aspect of this is closed now, and I would accept a motion from someone to accept the recommendation of the assessor for the shift.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the Board of Assessors for a classification shift of 1.75 percent, which results in a minimum residential factor of .771885.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there further discussion? I see none. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
One moment, please. While our Assistant Town Manager is getting the visual aids ready, we are a little ahead of schedule for our 7:30 appointment. Do we want to launch into 7:30 appointment at this time, or start to cover communications?
I think we can go forward with the presentation.
I concur. So let's do that. 7:30 appointment is with our own Judith O'Connell, the Chairman of the Yentile Farm Development Committee. And Judy is going to update us on the Yentile Farm project. So Judy, we're anxious to hear from you.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'm just going to pass out handouts to my right, and if it's okay with the Board, I'm going to do the presentation from my seat, if that's okay. You know, it's really more of an informal update to you as a Board. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Town Manager, for inviting me to be on the agenda as a representative for the Yentile Farm Development Committee. A lot of our members were not able to attend this evening, but certainly are pleased that we are here tonight to give you an update. And I also want to thank my colleagues on the Board for entertaining this appointment this evening. I am going to click through the slides and kind of give you a brief update here. This is more of a light update, just wanted to touch base with you prior to the end of the year, as we are moving forward with our finalization of the project. So I just want to take you quickly through a progress update, which is, September 2015, we completed the design development phase and completed the value engineering process. I certainly want to give a lot of credit to the town hall personnel for doing a lot of internal work on this meeting together and coming through a very lengthy process and bringing it to the committee. And we've had several discussions as a committee and had to vote some things in, some vote some things out, and make some changes. In October of 2015, we had a 50 percent construction document plan set submitted, and the full completed staff review of the plan set was done. Moving on to the next slide, as you know, from a budgetary standpoint, we had an approved budget of $4.80 million, and in September, about the September 28th timeframe, we were over budget. So we were at $4.98 million, and we needed to go back to the value engineering phase again and take a look at things, what were the must-haves, what could we potentially phase out of the project to try and bring us back into line. So as of October 14th, we are at $4.82 million, so as you'll see, we are slightly over, and I'll explain that in detail. We do have a construction contingency, and we obviously are waiting to see what the bids come in at, so hopefully, we can bring this back in under that value. We needed to adjust some of the specifications to the town design standard. We adjusted some design to reduce the utility pole relocations and retaining walls. We changed the walkways around the event green area from concrete to pavement to try and save money. And we made the pavement walkway to textural and ADAL alternative to be included only if the bids come in under budget. And we adjusted the basketball court lighting to a more affordable grade. So what does that mean? So obviously, the picture is a little bit smaller, but we made some changes in terms of materials that really did not compromise the structure of the project, but were more affordable. And furthermore, regarding the walkway to textural, that will be graded, loomed, and seeded, heading out to the connection for textural, but it will not be a paved surface. So it will be essentially an informal walking trail, but we won't expend the money at this time unless budgets come in where we need them to be to actually pave that area. So people can still be free in that area, walk in that area, there's no issues with that, but that was one area from a cost-savings perspective that we have as an ADAL. The other was the concept of having a flag. And when that was brought to the committee, the committee overall decided that we did not want to forego having an American flag at the property site, and obviously, that needs to be lighted appropriately for what an American flag deserves and should have. So that was added back into the plan, so that's what brought us up over budget. And we're adding that into the fundraising piece as well, so hopefully, we'll be able to fundraise towards that value to help bring that number down as well, and I'll talk a little bit more about fundraising. The adjustment of the court lighting for a more affordable grade, it will still be illuminated. There's lighting which is called musco lighting, which is much, much more expensive. We will be illuminating that surface, but we'll be going with a lighting component that certainly will keep it well lit, but it is not the top-of-the-line lighting configuration that was originally in the plan. Moving on to the construction document phase, at this point, this is where we're at right now. So we are selecting colors and finishes, we're developing signage designs, we're working through the plan and specification review and comment period, and we are assembling the bid documentation. So we're really doing a lot of window shopping right now in terms of colors, boardwalk colors, bench colors, you name it, in terms of the playground configuration. You'd be surprised at the differences among the committee, what people like. So Kendra's been very helpful in doing some surveys with the committee to help us make some choices, and at the end of the day, we may not all agree with the color configuration, but we need to come out with one final rendering, so we're really in the final stages of doing that. And it's been kind of fun, picking out plants, picking out colors, and trying to do a more natural rustic theme, so there certainly will be a wildcat theme, you know, present there, but it's going to blend in with the geography and topography of the land, so it's definitely going to be more of the beiges, and you will see some green, a lot more colorful plantings, kind of low-maintenance areas that will blend nicely with the area. I know most of you have been by there and know what it looks like, so it's not going to be all blue and white, so I just want to prepare you now that it won't look exactly like that. So moving on to the fundraising, this area really is the one big pillar of this project that is still being further developed and trying to get it up and off the ground. The Friends of Nine Cross Street is a separate entity from the committee. It's an arm's length from the town so that they can go about fundraising. They are headed up with Ed Rixtons, who is a member of the committee, who has a full committee, and he's continuing to add members. He just recently added a gentleman who sits in the audience here tonight. So Robert, thank you very much for stepping up and joining that group. So they're finalizing the website, including online donation collection, they're developing marketing materials for donor presentations, they're meeting with local organizations and potential donors, they're continuing to add membership to the fundraising committee, they're finalizing a commemorative brick program, and they're continuing to look at grants. As you know, we submitted an application through the work of Valerie G... As you know, we submitted an application through the work of Valerie Gingrich and Kendra Amorall for the park grant and we're awaiting a decision on that. We will have our first presence as a Yentile Farm Committee at the Festival of Trees, so there will be a table out there. They're still really working on their marketing collateral, their messaging, they've had their first meeting with We Are One Wilmington. And the people that they're speaking to, there's been a tremendous amount of traction, but there's a lot that goes into it in terms of getting the tax classification set up, a mailbox, getting a website, being able to get online donations, making sure that we have a portfolio of fundraising items that we can actually go out and sell. And so, they're continuing to meet very actively, you know, through the holiday season to try and get things up and running. And I expect that you'll see, you know, a major push in the fundraising arena in the coming months, especially December into January of 2016 and beyond. So, this is really the area to go towards the $1 million pledge that we put out there. Obviously, we're a little bit over the million because we need to get a flagpole, which is about $6,500, $6,800 just for the flagpole itself, and that doesn't include the lighting. So, what I've learned through this whole process is, in general, not reference to the flag, but just in general, how much things cost. And you'd be surprised, I never, I never knew trees cost as much as they do and benches cost as much as they do and bike racks cost as much as they do and so on and so forth. So, we're working through that as a group. And as I said, this is a separate committee from the Yentile Farm Development Committee that is the Friends of Nine Cross Street. So, moving on to the timeline, just to give you an idea of where we're at. So, November to December 2015, we will complete the construction documents and other bid documentation. January to February of 2016, the bid project and award construction contract will be completed. March of 2016, construction will begin. And then, June of 2017, construction is due to be complete. Most of the work will be completed in 2016, though some of the plantings and final finishes may occur in the spring of 2017. So, as I close, I just wanted to thank this Board once again for your support throughout this entire project. We've had at least over 40 meetings, you know, publicly posted, we've had many workshops, public forums, we've had a few updates here to the Board of Sluckman. I certainly want to thank the entire committee for their work that they've put in thus far. I would not be able to get through all of this and get it done without the help of Jeff and Kendra at Town Hall and their administrative team to help with the day-to-day. And certainly, Green, who is our partner, has done an unbelievable job in stepping into this project. We've had some delays and certain circumstances that we've had to work through the project, but overall, it's been an excellent experience. I think that the Wilmington residents that have stepped forward to volunteer, they've made a very long-term commitment and they continue to do that. And they're still, you know, eagerly going after that $1 million fundraising goal. And we still have a tremendous amount of work to do. But I think at this point, we're starting to get into the home stretch where things are getting finalized and you'll actually start to see shovels in the ground in 2016. And you'll actually really see this project come to life as you drive by Nine Cross Street. So, once again, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I can answer some questions if Jeff has anything he wants to add, certainly feel free. And once again, thank you for your time.
Do you have anything to add at this time?
No, I think it's been well said.
We'll invite you to chime in if the conversation leads that way. I'll start with you, Mr. McCoy, if you want to...
No, I'm just kind of excited by what's going on. It's going to be for all ages. I think that's going to be the unique thing about this. So, a grandfather can bring their grandchildren, grandmother can bring their granddaughter, and vice versa, the family. That would be wonderful. I think Judy, you've done an outstanding job and it goes to show that this thing's off and running. I support it from its infancy and I think it's going to be a great thing. I really, really, truly do. I'm kind of excited by going there someday. Really am. Thank you.
I'll go right in line here. We've seen a number of schematics, two-dimensional, sky view kind of things. That's my favorite view so far. We have probably a clearer picture in print form here, but it definitely gives you a sense of what we're, what we're going to have with the open space and the playing fields. It truly is an investment in the community's future. And I too am delighted that we've made this investment. Judy, I can only say thank you for the hours of hard work that you've put in. And I know that there's a lot of other folks that you're working with, Kendra and others, that have brought us to this point, but your leadership certainly is appreciated. So, thank you for that. I wanted to ask briefly, you mentioned about, in the fundraising side, and I don't want to hold your feet to the fire, but, you know, we talked about the, or you talked about the bricks, you know, for sale, and I've seen that in other communities or other projects. Will there be other things that folks can, or I should say maybe businesses or individuals could buy? I'm thinking, I don't know, scoreboards or benches or things like that? Have you kind of finalized that yet?
Yes. There'll be essentially a fundraising menu that people can essentially purchase off of. And they're being very selective on some of the larger-ticket items, you know, such as the turf field naming rights, scoreboards, they talked about bundling those two things together. I have taken a step back from the fundraising just based on ethics, so I don't have the latest revision, but you will be able to buy a brick of your choice with X amount of lines depending on the price point that you purchase. I think the bricks will be of varying sizes and I think they start around the, don't quote me on this, but in the $130, $130 range. And then, our larger-ticket items go up to $250,000. So, you know, whether it's a bench that you were to, or a game table, you know, there'll be plenty of opportunity for people to purchase. So, there'll be, you know, we want to try and give everybody an opportunity to make a contribution to the site if they want to, just to have their name there and also for the financial piece too. There'll be a donor board that will be there erected for some of the larger donors. We can't put everybody's name on the donor board, they're already putting it on the brick, so it would be a bit redundant. We're saving that marquee donor board for some of the higher-end sponsors. And then, obviously, we have the Yentile name that was voted in at town meeting, so the overarching name for the complex has already been decided. So, I would envision, you know, the courts, the pavilion, the turf field. I think the turf field will probably be, you know, obviously, the big signature item and we're really hoping that businesses want to step forward and we're working through some of the terms and conditions and on payment and all of that, so that will be forthcoming. But yes, to answer your question, we won't be selling barrels because we'll be, but we'll be selling benches and...
We have some disposal companies that might be interested in that, but, all right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that answer. And Mr. Smagley?
Yeah, just thank you for all the work that you have done, you spearheaded with this committee. The hours and hours of work that go into running a project like this, to have a committee together of volunteers is just, again, speaks volume to Wilmington and how people aren't afraid to step up and, you know, to volunteer and to work many hours. And this is far from over, so I'm sure there'll be another meeting or two. I will not be purchasing one of the quarter-million-dollar items. I might be able to afford a brick or two, but...
We do take Visa Mast account and Marketing Express.
Right. All right. But thank you for you and your committee.
Don't take his check.
Thank you.
Mr. Newhouse?
I really don't have anything to add that hasn't already been said, other than maybe one point of clarification, I think. When you had gone through the, kind of the budget process, I think at one point, you would use the term "over budget." And I just, I think I understand what you mean, but I want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, conceptually, the town took a conceptual plan and approved a $4.8 million appropriation. And then, when specifications were generated, you get down to the nitty-gritty with materials and design and all that stuff. Now, when you put a price to that, that's what you meant by "over budget," right?
Correct.
When you give a, the best hard number you can to the specifications, it seems to exceed what we've appropriated. And that's when you went through and did the value engineering and brought the projected price for the whole package to be what the appropriation was for. So, I just want to make sure that's not lost on folks who are watching that, you know, this, don't turn off the TV saying, "Oh, it's over budget."
Right.
It's, this process has enabled us to, for the committee, to deliver a project with specifications that we believe will come in on budget.
Correct. I'm glad that you clarified that. I mean, as it stands right now, we're 4.82. So, and that's as a result of the flagpole. And also, we are going to have a clerk of the works that's going to have to oversee this project onsite for the duration of the project. And Green, through their expertise and professional experience, indicated that the salary amount that we allocated was not large enough. So, we had to increase that. And so, those two items, the flagpole with proper lighting for the flag and the clerk of the works increase, so we're hoping between estimates coming in and the construction contingency that we have in place that we, but just being totally out there in the open, we're at 4.82 right now and we should be at 4.80.
Right. Figure out how to raise or save that, right?
Correct. And that's where, you know, we, that's where the flagpole's been moved over into the fundraising portfolio. It originally wasn't there, so now it's there. So, hopefully, we'll be able to take that number and bring it down and...
Yeah, I suppose one thing that may not have been said is a good decision in my book. I'll take the, I'll take the $6,500 bucks, you know, keep that specification in there.
Sure.
We'll find the money.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, Mr. Hall?
Just to be clear, with regard to the fundraising efforts, so the committee that Sluckman O'Connell referenced is separate and distinct from the Yentile Committee that has been meeting for quite some time now. They've filed as a nonprofit, so similar to the Friends of the Library, for example, they're essentially a support group, if you will, for this initiative. So, when they get rolling, funds would be donated to that group. And then, in turn, as funds are available, they would make a donation to the town, which would be set in a separate account specifically for the purpose of funding this project.
Okay, thank you for that. Unless there's anything else. Judy, are you all set?
No. Thank you very much again.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention and we'll look forward to the next update. Very well. So, that was our 7:30 to 7:45, which brings us to 7:45. And that is, I'll give Kendra just a moment to shut down technology. Thank you. Our 7:45 appointment is with Kendall Vaughn. I think, I hope I'm saying that correctly. Kendall Vaughn is here to speak to us about the Holiday Drive to Support Recovery. Ms. Vaughn, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Much less technical than the woman from the assessor's office.
So, we're anxious to hear from you. The floor is yours and let us know what this project is about.
My name's Kendall Vaughn. I have lived in Wilmington my whole life and I'm deeply invested in the community and people in my neighborhood and the schools. And this is, this means a lot to me. So, I just want to say thank you very much for giving me the chance to tell you guys about what's going on. And, you know, Mary Delai and Shelley Newhouse, the Superintendent and the Director of the Board of Health respectively, have propelled this into something amazing. You know, Superintendent Delai is dedicated to the cause of reducing stigma about the disease of addiction and about treatment for alcoholism and addiction. And she spoke very passionately about that at a recent event at St. Thomas and another one at the middle school. The police department, you know, supports recovery as opposed to, you know, treatment instead of just arrests for drug users. And this supply drive initiative arose in part out of the momentum from that Substance Abuse Prevention Month that the town had put on. And in part, you know, I wanted to find a way to contribute. You know, food banks and soup kitchens tend to get full on Thanksgiving. And, you know, what I wanted to help my kids connect, you know, gratitude to giving, to, you know, actual concrete people. You know, there are, there are a lot of underserved populations and I think, you know, recovering addicts and alcoholics are, you know, certainly those in treatment are among them. And, you know, statewide, there is, you know, an initiative to, you have a, they hashtag it, "State Without Stigma," it's a push from the Governor's Office to think about and reexamine the way we look at addiction treatment and, you know, helping people get back on their feet. I think this supply drive is important for two reasons. One, a lot of people go into treatment with the clothes on their backs. I know a woman who showed up with the clothes on her back, a men's to, like a men's t-shirt and a beach towel. And that was it. And she was supposed to live there for the next nine, 11 months. And, you know, it was the kindness of other people that, you know, helped her to build into, you know, a sober, successful woman in her community. And, you know, I was speaking to one of the directors at a local detox facility this afternoon and asking some follow-up questions, getting a little more specificity about exactly what they wanted and how they would allocate it. And, you know, I asked, I said, you know, she was giving me some specific details about socks. So, I'm like, all right, well, underwear appears on the list, you know, frequently for things that are requested among, you know, a number of facilities. And what she told me was that people will arrive at their facilities with none. They just won't have any of that or socks. So, I think, you know, when it comes to identifying a need, that need is obvious. And based on, you know, some of the statistics that Chief Begonis had given us at the night at St. Thomas, the urgency, the urgency is there and the impact on our community is there as well. I believe he said, I believe he said, "To date this year, there have been seven overdoses." I may be misquoting that. But I just, I just think about it in the context of other ways in which young people died. If someone said, "Seven young people are going to be hit in a crosswalk over the next 12 months," I feel like we'd be spurred into action. I feel like we would be talking about it and trying to prevent it. And where I think stigma impacts treatment and recovery is that, that urgency doesn't seem to exist when people think that they can control or know their way out of addiction. And I think that opening the conversation among young people, the schools, and influential adults in their lives is going to be what moves, what moves change. And, you know, I mean, my children are five and seven and, you know, I can, I can get them involved in a supply drive. So, I think that allowing for, you know, action and volunteering to be taken by young people, you know, in the school system will give them a sense of connection to the cause. So, that's a little bit about why I think it's really important. A little bit as far as progress is concerned, we've placed collection, donation collection boxes at the high school, the middle school, the town hall, the police station, St. Elizabeth's Church, the Methodist United Church, Remax on Main Street, Lorraine Spada School of Dance, also on Main Street, the tree lighting ceremony, which will be the evening of December 5th, and the Festival of Trees, which will run the 5th and 6th of December during the days. Both of those activities have supported open collection throughout those events. And I think that's really important because sometimes we just need something that's convenient. Sometimes we need to bring something to a place that we're already going. And I also think that the association of seeing, you know, our town, you know, Wilmington supports rec... Supports Recovery and I think there's this sort of a subconscious sense of, of community as far as seeing things like that at community events. We do also, we have a website and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my husband for that because I got out of the meeting with Mary Delai and Shelley Newhouse and they said, "Oh, you know, you can get a website up and going and that, that would help promote things." And I texted my husband before I even left the parking lot and I said, "The town of Wilmington thanks you for the website you're going to build tonight." And now we have WilmingtonSupportsRecovery.com. So, I'm grateful for that and it is, it's been, it's been a very useful tool in terms of sharing information and updating. You know, there's people, a, a lot of institutions have, have showed a lot of support and I, in terms of managing institutional support, you know, promotional support and, you know, from, support from constituents, I think, I think those things all need to, need to work together. I've, so in addition to the, the tree lighting and the Festival of Trees, the Rotary Club has offered to accept donations at their weekly meetings. I just had a conversation with Mr. Luci this morning who's interested in putting out a donation box along with some information so that, you know, a shopper can be in the store, identify a need, take it off the shelf, pay for it, donate it. And again, I think those, you know, making that simple, it makes it, motivates people to take action. And there does seem to be something, you know, sort of self-reinforcing about taking an action and, you know, believing in the cause and you believe in the cause and you take an action. And I think that dynamic is really important to consider as we talk about sort of the role of a supply drive in a greater initiative to prevent drug abuse, curb opioid deaths and, you know, reduce a lot of those risky behaviors like teen drinking and teen use of marijuana among our high school students. I think Mary Delai articulated it just perfectly. And there's no, she, she doesn't suggest that there's a judgment against drinking when you're an adult. Make that decision when you're an adult. And, you know, the, the topic of marijuana use as it becomes legalized in parts of the country has come up and that's fine. Those are decisions you can make as an adult and, and let's delay those decisions until you're an adult. And I think that I want to do as much as I can to be having an open conversation with young people in the community. You know, and I think, I think there are a lot of ways to do this and I think especially if we're able to promote this a little more directly at the schools, we'll, we'll have, we'll be able to reach them even better.
Thank you very much. What I'm going to do is, I'll first, I'll reiterate our appreciation or at least my, my admiration to you for taking this on. It's not easy to have these conversations, I think. Certainly, we all have, I suspect, most of us at some point in our life have been touched by someone who has dealt with some type of substance abuse or addiction issues. And so, it's something many folks can probably relate to and I certainly admire the effort at this time but also throughout the entire year for this type of an effort. So, we hope that you'll be wildly successful and that folks will be, will benefit from your efforts and from the, the team of people that I'm sure you'll put to work in doing so. What I'll do is open it up to the board of selectmen to offer any comments or questions and I'll start off to my left here, Ms. O'Connell.
I just wanted to thank you, Kendall, for being here tonight. I was pleased when I saw this on the agenda. I was not able to attend the St. Thomas but I actually took the time and, and watched it. We get the, the Vimeo recording, so I did actually spend the time to watch it. And from the police chief to a mother who lost a son, I'm, I'm just, you could see the, the genuine, you know, sentiments in the room that, that we, as, the place was packed, by the way, in terms of people being there, that this is a long time coming, that I think that the community is ready to talk about this. And some households maybe not, but I think we're starting to open up the dialogue and have the discussion and to be out there knowing that this is a problem. Going into work, you can turn on the radio, any major news radio station, and they're now having commercials that are talking about, you know, literally a gentleman was talking about, "I used to be called a junkie and now I'm in recovery," and talking about, you know, eradicating the stigma that's around it. And, you know, it's, I think Mike said it best that, you know, most of us can think of someone that's been affected by cancer and a lot of us now can, can think of someone in their immediate family that's had some sort of a experience with addiction. My immediate family is going through it now. So, I think it, it can affect a lot of people and it's not as simple as just telling that person to pull themselves up by their bootstraps and overcome it. It's such a, it's such a big issue and I think you have to start somewhere. So, I, I think what you're doing is great. I'm going to do everything I can to personally promote it around town, certainly going to make a donation myself. And I hope that between the police and, and public health and the school and as a community that we continue to embrace topics like this and people like yourself that want to step forward for a cause and, and rally behind you and support you because I think that this is going to continue to be an issue. And I think it's bigger than any one of us as a person or as a family and I think we all need to work together. So, I'll close with that and just say thank you very much to you and to your husband for making a contribution to this community. We're very lucky to have you. It took a lot of courage and bravery to come here tonight before a board in a public setting and reach out and thank you for doing that. Thank you.
I think it's pretty well said. I just want to say thank you for being here and I think at the end of the day, we're talking about it. I think that's what it, basically, we're talking about it and I totally agree, you know, and I know the chief feels the same way, is treatment versus incarceration. Even the governor is supporting treatment versus incarceration. The drug dealers should throw them a jail and throw away the key, but you're right. I mean, it's kind of sad when you pick up the newspaper and you read the obituary and you see somebody 16, 17, 20 years old die unexpectedly, right away you say, "Oh, my God, it must be drugs." I mean, and it's a sad, sad thing and it's unfortunate. In the Merrimack Valley area, there's a higher concentration of heroin overdose than any other area in the country. And it's devastating to hear that. It's in our community, it's in our backyard, you know, so, and I, I don't think I'd ever wanted to say this, but I had a brother, Junior. He was killed in a motorcycle accident. He wasn't a heroin addict, but he liked to smoke marijuana and went out one night and killed himself. He got into an accident. He should have never hit that car and it's, you know, it even upsets me today to even think about it. So, we do have loss, but it's kind of a sad thing, you know, it's just, it happens. But I don't mind saying it, I do talk to some people when I own the restaurant. I said, "Listen, you got to really watch what you're doing. Look what happened to my poor brother." I never think, I never said that publicly to anybody, but he just graduated high school. A year later, he's in 38 by the Dunkin' Donuts and near Lowell Shed Park and not aware of his senses because he was smoking marijuana and unfortunately, and got killed, hit right into a car and just died instantly, broke his neck. And it's sad, really, really sad. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I think Judy said it so articulately that thank you for coming here today. Thank you for coming up with this initiative. Not only is it needed, they need clothing and things like that, but I think in maybe even more importantly is we're sitting here talking about it. And it's, it's time. It's time. It's an epidemic that I think everybody knows that Wilmington is no different than any other city in town across the country. So, thank you for taking this initiative on and coming here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say one thing I'd say about my brother. I loved him, he was a really great kid, but that was something that he enjoyed to do and you can't control everybody. And it's just a really sad, sad situation, but I want people to know he was an awesome kid. He worked at the restaurant full-time. He was one of the best people to be a cook. Unfortunately, he had that demon and it got the best of him and I, that's why I'm just a little emotional sharing it, but I want people to know he was a great kid, but he did something foolish and sadly, it was devastating for the whole family. 19 years old. Sad.
I think it's, my colleagues have said it so well. I just echo their sentiments in thanking you for taking on the initiative. And then just maybe one clarification that, or, or a point that we might make to the audience and maybe the press can help to spread that word. I, I see in your handout that you're requesting that items be new with the exception for clean, like-new winter wear. Just seems to me that's worth putting out there so that people understand clearly, you know, except for warm clothes, it'd be appreciated if they could donate new items. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, do you have anything you want to share or add at this time?
No, I think it's all been said.
Very well. So, Kendall, unless you have anything further, we, we again, thank you for spending time with us this evening and we'll work from our respective angles to try to help support you in your efforts.
Thank you so much for having me and hearing me out and supporting the drive.
Very good. Good luck. Our 7:55 scheduled appointment is with Michael Morris, the town accountant, to discuss with us the investment of the OPEB trust funds. OPEB being Other Post Employment Benefits, right?
Yes, I'm glad you said it so I don't have to say it. We can just refer to it as OPEB if that's all right.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good to be here.
Thanks for being here.
In May, we voted to establish an OPEB trust fund. This was somewhat different than the stabilization fund we had established before. It allows us to get more aggressive with our investment in dealing with this financial problem. We also voted to transfer money from the capital stabiliz, I'm sorry, the stabilization fund to the trust. We also appropriated an additional $1 million from available funds, free cash. So, that brings the total to 1,600,006. Those funds are available for investment in more aggressive opportunities. We reviewed several companies. We particularly focused on two. One of the companies we use frequently for our trust funds, cemetery trusts. The other company was, happened to be the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They have a, a setup called the State Retirement Benefits Trust Fund. After quite a bit of research, we determined that they were the best option for us. They had the lowest rates and the best rate of return compared to anybody else we dealt with, particularly nationally. Now, we withdrew a whole bunch of paperwork and submitted it all and they were asking for one more thing to be done. And that thing to be done is to vote this body two resolutions that accomplish three things. The first is to designate the treasurer as custodian of the funds and the next one has two things that, one is to authorize the treasurer to execute the agreement and conduct business basically by making deposits and withdrawals from the fund. And they need a formal vote to accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you. So, there's probably questions, I suspect. So, if, if it's okay, I guess I'll start down to my left this time. Judy? Did I already do that? Whatever.
You know, from my standpoint, you know, I know that the manager has been looking at this and has been working, you know, very methodically with, with you as town accountant. I want to support whatever the town recommendation is in this regard. I, I feel confident based on what I've read that you've weighed out your options and you're making a recommendation which is going to poise this town to the best of our ability with the conditions that we're, we have to deal with. I mean, nothing is ideal. There's, there's quite a hefty expense here, so certainly I would, I would support this based on your recommendation. It's a need that needs to, needs to happen and I feel inclined to support it accordingly. So, I don't have any specific questions. I think this is going to be an ongoing thing that we're going to be dealing with for many years to come. So, there's a, there's a, I'm sure we'll be talking about this again and again.
We'll be talking about the funding of it. If we vote to establish it this way, once it starts, we're off and running, so.
Yeah, I, I too, support it. I believe we're in good hands with the town manager and the town accountant. You've hit, you folks have been here in this community a long time and you're going to guide us in the right direction and absolutely we depend on your both expertise and support it.
I would also like to mention Pamela McKenzie, our treasurer collector, was heavily involved in these discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snavia? Maybe you could just clarify how long this funding, like how much, what percentage of a budget would we have to put into this fund every year? Would this be a, an annual amount that there is something set aside that should be set aside or?
We would have to fund approximately $4 million a year for like 30 years to fund this completely out. I don't know of too many communities that are ready to throw $4 million into this. We need to make some steps forwards, you know, forward. In the past couple of years, we've done that by increasing the funding to, from a half million dollars to a million dollars. Very positive step, but this is a hu, huge financial problem. By funding it to some extent early, we will get ahead of the game a little bit.
I do remember a few years back, you come in, in front of this board and explained how it was going to work and all that. I, I kind of got a good idea of, of what's going on with it, but I think it's important for people to know that this is another one of those things that, you know, we're going to have to pay. It's, it's a, it's a man, you know, people are working for the town, people are retiring, people are getting benefits when they retire. That, does that kind of sum it up a little layman's term?
Yeah, I mean, they're looking for, we have a lot of people who are already retired and a lot of people who are going to retire over the next 30 years or 40 years or whatever going forward and that in the past, we used to pay as you go, as the term was. You paid the bill when you got it. They're now saying we need to accrue some, they've accrued the liability, they've done an actuarial study, they've determined we owe a significant amount of millions upon millions of dollars and this is the attempt to fund that liability.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that. So, as I've mentioned in the past, and, and Mike is certainly familiar with this, Mike Morris, the accounting, general accounting principles have established in the last, what, 10 years, I guess anyways, the requirement to recognize this liability that accrues from benefits to individuals that have retired from the towns. And this is an issue that not only affects cities and towns in Massachusetts but across the country and other public entities. Based upon the last actuarial study that was done for the town in 2013, the town's liability was $133 million. That's down from $137 million, which is certainly a step in the right direction, but obviously that's a sizable liability. So, our intent is to begin to, and continue to put sums of money into this fund to try to address that liability. As I've mentioned many times in the past, we're not going to be able to fund ourselves out of this problem. One of the other elements to this issue is looking at how we can modify the schedule of benefits, health insurance benefits in particular, that are offered to employees in a way that is, that is acceptable so that we're not going to over-impose on employees in the way of deductibles and co-pays and all, but in a manner that's going to be able to reduce to some measure this ongoing liability. With this effort tonight, if the board is so inclined, the investment vehicle would be through this state program. And because the, the program that, that the town accountant is talking about essentially has about $60 billion that is invested, obviously, there's an economy of scale there in terms of the fact that there are a number of municipalities that are already involved in this program as well as some state agencies. And there's also opportunities to invest in various vehicles, whether it's fixed income such as bonds, certain types of stocks. So, there's, obviously, one of the key issues here is diversity and making sure that the money, our portion of the money is invested in a diverse manner. But that would be the intent going forward for a considerable period of time. And the other element to this that provides some measure of cushion against risk is the fact that we anticipate that the funds will be in this account for many years, 15, 20, 25 or more years. So, it'll be able to weather the ups and downs of the economy.
And people are living longer would be one of the reasons why.
And that, that isn't, that's one of the challenges. And that isn't, that's one of the challenges, is the fact that as people live longer, obviously their need for health coverage and health expenses continues to grow.
Roger.
Mr. Newhouse.
Yeah, I guess, and I, you know, I don't want to belabor the conversation because, you know, I think that we all trust the recommendation that's being made, but just for my own edification, first of all, this is a stabilization fund of sorts. So we will continue to pay as we go, but we are in the infancy of building up that stabilization account for someday down the road, right? Is that a fair way to? That is correct. Okay. So I think that's important for people to understand that we're building a stabilization account, but every year, we're going to continue to fund what it takes to meet those obligations along with the rest of the budget. You had indicated, Mike, in your quick synopsis there, that we're looking at as a town way to take advantage of some more aggressive opportunities.
Correct.
And then you also indicated that the particular fund that you're recommending had the lowest rates and the best rates of return. I get the best rates of return. I think I know what the lowest rates are. But if you could just quickly tell us what you meant by more aggressive opportunities, I think some folks might hear that and say, well, wait a minute, are we going to be investing this in risky-type investments? And that's, that's not what I think you mean, so.
No, this is more aggressive than we've been able to do on our own. This allows us to invest where they put their state retirement funds. They get to go out and do any, try and get an example here if I could. They invest in things like global equity, fixed income things like 20-year treasury notes, fixed income programs, hedge funds, real estate, private equity funds, timber. Those are resources we can't get at very easily, you know. We invest our funds in various banks and so on and so forth, in money markets and certain notes and CDs and stuff. And we get, you know, we're lucky to get 1%, and in some cases, we get 1.5% for short periods of time. This allows us to actually get into the stock market of the world without, but they have limits on how aggressive they can get. They can't go to the super-aggressive things, for sure.
It strikes me that, I mean, I'm no financial planner, I'm not great with that stuff, but every, every accomplished planner that I talk to always talks about diversification and how that's important for stability. So it strikes me that when you rattle off those things, it's a fund that can avail itself of a diverse portfolio of investments to maintain some safety and conservative approach to it.
And they have the funds to do that at $60 billion, Jeff mentioned. This is.
All right, very well, thanks.
And they are viewed by a state board that was set up to monitor this. Pointe of the governor, a pointe from Parac, state treasurer's office, and so on and so forth.
Right, but when you had given your overview, we have the benefit of your memo, but we're referring to the treasurer-collector as, as our custodian here.
Correct.
We're not dealing with a nameless, faceless bureaucrat someplace.
Yep.
Thank you. I had similar questions as Mr. Newhouse. One question I had, or in addition, is this idea of when the money, or, you know, when the investment happens. Like in my life, I invest a little bit every month over the course of the year to avail myself of dollar-cost averaging. I buy low, and sometimes I take advantage of the market when it's low and et cetera. So will we put all of our, when the budget becomes available and we have the money available, we make one big investment and let it sit there? Or are we going to sort of trickle into the market, into the fund over the course of time?
My recommendation is to put it in right away.
Okay.
Our cyclical personal lives become monthly or weekly or whatever, whereas the life of a municipality is yearly in this effect. You have your annual town meeting, you appropriate the money, and then you take the action on it afterwards. And this is one of those scenarios.
Which speaks to the long-term.
To that point, though, I mean, I think what Mike is saying, so the money that we have, this 1.6 million, would go in, if the board is so inclined to authorize this, that the transfer would be made. But then going forward, as each town meeting, if it adopts a recommendation to add funds into the OPEB trust account, then those funds in turn. So to some measure, over the longer term, we will be taking advantage of that dollar-cost averaging, because each year, ideally, it would be my recommendation, additional funds are approved at town meeting for this purpose.
So the incremental investment is not on a monthly basis, but rather almost on an annual basis after town meeting authorizes the funds?
Right.
Okay. That's sufficient. I just, I wondered what the mechanism would be for that. So I support the recommendation as well, and it certainly seems to make sense. So, thank you very much. I think that's, unless there's anything else?
Nope.
Do we have action to take at this time, or is that under board to consider later in the?
It is.
Okay. Very well. Thank you, Mr. Morris. I appreciate you being here this evening. That said, Jeff, you can jump right into communications, if you will.
Yes. Under communications, first item on the agenda is a memorandum from me to the board, just outlining the department, the budget process that we are now in the midst of. At our most recent, my most recent meeting with the department heads, instructions were issued about the preparation of the budget for the coming year. Departments have until December 4th to submit their operating budgets. They've already provided information about their, any recommended adjustments to the capital improvement budget. In December, I will be meeting with each of the departments to review both their operating budget as well as their capital improvement requests. Just by point of information, just on the capital side, the number of requests, or the amount of the requests that have come in for the coming fiscal year, absent the funding requests coming from Chapter 90, which is the highway construction, and the capital that would be paid for through water revenue, the amount is 6.7 million being requested for capital in fiscal 2017. So we will be working through that process. My expectation is to have solid budget numbers by the second week in January. And as you know, the budget presentation would be made to the board and to the finance committee on February 1st. So certainly between now and then, if board members have particular comments that they would like to offer in terms of either the substance of what is being recommended or the format that it's being recommended in, I would certainly be appreciative of any comments.
To that point, if I may, Mr. Hall, we had had some brief conversation about that specific point. And I wanted to sort of take the pulse of you, my colleagues, if, if there'd be an interest in creating a, an agenda item at our next board of selectmen meeting, to just have an open discussion about any personal priorities perhaps that we each have, that we would like to see included in Jeff's, Jeff's planning for the next fiscal year's budget. Either in terms of items that would like to be included in that budgetary planning, or the process itself, or the means of communication or whatever. So, you know, certainly if there's, on an ongoing daily basis, if there's specific things that you have questions or concerns, obviously, we all have a line of communication directly to the town manager. But I thought there might be some merit to the idea of having a, an agenda item at our next board of selectmen meeting where we could sort of have a discussion and maybe through that discussion, ideas might come out that we could sort of either endorse together, or at least Jeff then gets a, gets a sense of where we kind of are collectively on some, some subjects. I don't know if there's opposition to that, or if there's support for that idea. Discussion? I'd like to do it, but I don't want to do it if there's any substantive opposition to the idea.
I have a question slash comment.
Yeah.
Certainly have no opposition to that. Is that a process that the manager thinks would be helpful? Or would you prefer to, you know, kind of have an open, kind of an open line of communication as to different priorities and thoughts? I think either way works for us. What way works better for you?
I think it may be helpful to have a conversation at a, at the next selectmen's meeting. I think it's helpful in a couple of respects. One is just logistically, rather than having five individual conversations, and also, I think it perhaps gives the board a sense of what everybody else is thinking, so.
Sure. I actually had a couple of brief points that I was going to make, but I'll reserve that for next meeting if that's the chairman's intention.
I don't want to bore, I mean, if you, you're certainly invited to share them this evening.
No, no, I'm happy to, happy to take it up another time.
Yeah, I mean, is that, is that acceptable to the rest of you, to have a 15 or 20-minute conversation at our next meeting? So between now and then, we'll all just sort of give some thought to some, some concepts of our own, and we'll see where, how the conversation goes? Thank you. I appreciate that. And that doesn't preclude or limit anyone from reaching out and making a phone call to Jeff at any time, so that continues to always be the case. And I hope we all know that.
Veteran services.
More veteran services. Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Next, under correspondence, we have a letter, a memo from Mike Woods, Public Works Director, advising me of the grant that we received. This was for the purchase of the wheeled carts for recycling. You may recall, as part of our effort to have the automated recycling grant was submitted to DEP. We are being funded for $71,310. That's $10 per cart. We had 71, 31, 7,131 carts that were issued. So we will, we're anticipating the receipt of a grant document that we will sign, and then presumably over the next few months, receive the funding. And the funding will be used to offset the costs, or some of the costs are related to the purchase of those, those units.
That's good news. Thank you.
The next piece of correspondence comes from Governor Baker, and he just announces the town's receipt of the grant for $71,000 for the recycling bins. Correspondence from Melissa Crane. This is from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs regarding the open space and recreation plan. And I would just note that the plan is preliminarily approved, subject to some, what I would characterize as relatively minor modifications. This status will remain in effect, this conditional approval will remain in effect through November of 2020. What it does is it makes the town eligible to participate in grant rounds and also to receive grant awards. We ultimately will have to finalize this open space plan in order to actually receive grant payments. In talking with Valerie Gingrich, the planning director, she tells me that she expects to be able to address these issues and respond to Ms. Crane by the middle of January. Next, we have correspondence from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. This is announcing that effective January 1, 2016, the number of off-premises alcohol licenses, and by that, I mean the types of licenses that, such as the one that Target had for sale of alcohol, will be, the number will be granted, will be increased, so that currently the, the number that any one business or group of individuals can have across the state is five. The number would go to seven as of January 1st. And then the increase will occur again as of January 1, 2020, going from seven per individual or business up to nine. This does not affect the number of licenses that individual cities and towns are eligible for. Next is correspondence from the, from Xfinity. They're, they describe some of the features that Xfinity offers, their X1 voice-controlled remote, their cloud-based DVR. And as part of their services, they also note the need to increase certain prices, which will be effective as of 12/20. And they described the increase in prices for various tiers of service. Then we have a petition article requested to be added to the town meeting, annual town meeting, from a Carl Martin Swanson. And he is seeking that the board adopt a bylaw that would, to just quote him here, "A bylaw providing for the disposition of civil traffic infractions arising in the town of Wilmington, Mass. in a diversion program operated by the National Traffic Ticket Diversion Tribunal, and providing for the increased enforcement of traffic laws in the town of Wilmington, MA." So this, the petition was submitted to the town clerk, and we will take a closer look at this. But if it has the requisite number of signatures for, from registered voters, then it would be on the town's warrant. And I believe, based upon a discussion with Sharon, the town clerk, that it does have the number of signatures.
I trust that far in advance of the, the people of the town rendering a vote on this, that Chief Begonis and Public Safety would be able to apprise us of what it all means, and their position or opinions as to the appropriate or lack thereof aspects of it.
Yes, I would anticipate certainly at the public hearing and that we will have had an opportunity to take a look at that and respond accordingly.
Yeah, I'll look forward to hearing more from our internal folks about that.
Definitely a pretty detailed read, and, you know, obviously, I got this sent to my house as well as being in the package, so interesting to say the least, and I think you've covered it, but I, my initial reaction, just to throw it out there, is that if this was necessary, we would have already gotten some version of this at a prior town meeting, and we haven't. So it doesn't make sense to me, but.
I'm refraining from, yeah, I appreciate that, Judy. The whole thing puzzled me, and I tried to read it word for word, and after a little while, my eyes glossed over, and it all sounded pretty ridiculous. So I'm, that's my knee-jerk reaction to it, but I'm anxious to get a more official take on what it really all means. I don't know. We're under board to consider items. The board to consider, the request of Deborah Porter of Boston Auctions and Antiques, LLC, for an annual auctioneer's license for property located at 355 Middlesex Avenue.
Yes, this is an annual license. It currently expires at the end of the month. The recommendation from Police Chief Michael Begonis, the police department, has reviewed the auctioneer's permit request by Deborah Potter of Boston Auction and Antiques, and recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion. We grant the request?
Second.
Motion is made, and second is the discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of granting the request? Unanimous? Thank you. Our next board to consider is the request of John Gorvan for the installation of a traffic sign on Chestnut Street at the intersection of Patches Pond Lane.
Yes, this request was forwarded to the police chief, and he writes, "The police department does not see the matter as a specific..." department does not see the matter as a specific public safety issue that would preclude us from responding to a call on Patches Pond Lane. If the town were amenable to installing a sign, it should be white with black lettering stating, quote, 'Do not block intersection.'" And he references the standards that comply with traffic signal, signals. The sign should be placed on Chestnut Street facing the northbound travel lane, just south of Patches Pond Lane. So apparently, the issue, as he, as Mr. Gorvan describes in his letter, is that during the commuter hours, traffic trying to exit Chestnut Street onto Burlington Ave backs up beyond Patches Pond, so that when people are heading, leaving Route 62, heading, I guess it would be south on Patches Pond, and trying to take the left into, Chestnut Street, trying to take the left into Patches Pond, they're precluded from doing that because of the long line of traffic. And his request is for a sign that would hopefully allow people to, or that people would follow, that would create some space for people to make that left-hand turn.
So, the police chief has suggested that it's not necessary, from his perspective, a public safety perspective, for them to be able to respond to public safety issues. So now it's really a matter of, I guess, convenience if the town were amenable to it. So, I don't know, from your perspective, or others on the town side, is there any thoughts about that?
How about, I'm sorry, how about a sign that says, "Be courteous to side street traffic." Just a thought.
Yeah.
It's a good thought.
Be courteous in general.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking for recommendations, or if there's anyone that's got questions, or want to make a motion, or whatever.
Just from my perspective, I don't know that, as the chief has indicated, there's certainly no harm. You know, the question obviously is whether people will follow the directive of the sign.
I guess, I hadn't made a decision coming to tonight's meeting on this, but the one observation, I guess, I would say, is that I live on a very heavily-traveled street, and pulling out of my driveway, I find that, when I first moved there 10 years ago, I was pleasantly surprised at how willing people were to accommodate you and let you get into the line of traffic and to be courteous, but that's when they were paying attention. So, it's, in all seriousness, I think it's people's level of attention, not so much their intentions or their motives, you know? So I guess, my observation has been, if folks don't see an SUV trying to pull out of a driveway or to pull into a street, I just don't know how effective a sign is going to be to get the attention of those kinds of drivers. And I, and I guess, is there a downside? Well, in this case, probably not, but if we get 200 of these requests, you know, we're going to be a town full of signs that I just don't know how effective they are, you know? So, that's my observation. I don't know what others think of it.
I share the concern about, you know, gosh, there's a lot of intersections. We could probably just, each one of us could probably name off two or three right out of the gate that are similar to what Mr. Gorvan describes. And I don't mean to suggest at all that Mr. Gorvan isn't, and I think what he's describing is absolutely happening, but there's probably a myriad, dozens of similar circumstances, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of putting signs at each one of those. So, it's a question of, do we open up that precedent? And I'm shaky on that. So I don't know, that was my perspective on it. I don't know if others have thoughts or ideas on that. If.
I think your comments are well-placed. I mean, I too didn't, you know, typically in the past, we've taken, you know, a recommendation from Public Safety Police Chief, et cetera. On the way home, just as an example, Mike brought up a point about paying attention versus intention. At the last three red lights, I looked at, and I looked at the five cars, you know, that I could see that were stopped, people were reading their phone, they were texting, you know? That's just the reality of it, and it's not right, but, you know, I am concerned about a town full of signs. But I also don't want that to be misconstrued for the point of public safety. I don't necessarily see this as a imminent, you know, public safety issue, it's more of an inconvenience. I think if there was a blazing fire truck or an ambulance, people would get out of the way. So, but, you know, it's easy to say that when it's not happening right in front of my house. So I think people get a little bit more passionate when they're directly affected by it, so, you know, there's, you can make comments on either side, but I think we need to be very judicious as to where we put signs, or else we're going to have signs everywhere for everything.
Then they become blind to them, and there's a sign at every intersection, you don't see them anymore.
That's my concern. Unless there's a motion, we'll pass over it and hope that the situation doesn't get worse, and that Mr. Gorvan can, and his neighbors can find a way to work with it. And it looks like that's where we're going. Very well, thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request to sign the deed for the property on Adler, Alder Street, that is. You'll recall at the special, at the annual town meeting, this was a piece of property that was requested to be declared surplus. In fact, it was deemed surplus. The assessor posted a minimum value on the property of $8,500. Town meeting approved it as surplus. We went through the bid process, and Michael Kachuk submitted a bid of $8,695. And so at this point, I would recommend that the board sign the deed.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, is there additional discussion? I see none, all in favor? Unanimous. That's going to go around. Our next Board to Consider is the authorization, as we discussed earlier, and Mr. Morris presented to us, the authorization to appoint the treasurer and assistant treasurer to execute investment agreement with the State Retirement Benefit Trust Fund.
So, as I understand it, he was looking for two parts. First, that I would move that the Board of Selectmen vote to designate the treasurer-collector as the custodian of the funds, and that, secondly, the Board of Selectmen authorize the treasurer-collected to execute the investment agreement, which would allow the deposit and withdrawal of funds.
Second.
That motion is made and seconded, is there additional discussion? I see none, all in favor of those motions? Unanimous. Do you have the, okay. And that's going around as well?
Yes. The final item under the Board to Consider is a request by a resident from town here, Mr. Fred Hogan, to seek the board's approval to place green lenses essentially in the lights at the Town Common in honor of veterans. This has been a theme that Walmart has picked up on, and it has extended it through both November and December, referenced as green light of vet in support of veterans and their families.
I had the occasion to speak briefly with Mr. Hogan at the Veterans Day reflections on the Common, and he had alerted me to the fact that he's going to be putting this request through, and I'm personally delighted to support it, and glad that this came forth. So is there a motion to support this effort?
If I may, please, Mr. Chair. This is just a, excuse me, as Tom Manager said, it was a Walmart initiative. Some people say it might be to sell green light bulbs, but it's just a way for people to just say, hey, you know, we're thanking you and thank you for your service. Put a light bulb in the, in your yard, in your window. I wasn't sure if it was just November, December, or if it was carried through. And I know Wilmington has a history of lighting up the Common for some great causes, and I'd be honored to vote in favor of this. Also, Mr. Hogan did donate about a dozen green light bulbs for our office that have been dispersed out to people that have come in through the town. So it's not just this, he's, he's put his money where his mouth is. He also, I think, if I'm not wrong, I think we got a call today from the Sons of Italy that said they're going to pick up some funding for this, as well as Fred and a couple other people.
That's good. Well, I don't think it's because of the holidays yet, but I was at two hardware stores over the weekend looking for a green light, because I was going to put one in my house, and they didn't have any. So hopefully that means that this is catching on.
Just a little way to say thanks.
Indeed, thank you for that. Again, is there a motion to this effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Public comments, we've got some public here. No, we have no public comments, however, so we'll jump into new business and committee reports, and I'll start to my right with Mr. Newhouse.
Nothing additional this evening, thank you.
Just like to publicly thank everybody for coming out on Veterans Day. It was inclement weather, and it was just another great turnout on the Common. Was not surprised, but happy to see such a huge crowd, it was nice.
Agreed. I'll go in line, and I'll express my gratitude to Lou and to his team of folks that put on a very somber, and I will tell you, I think the dismal weather actually added a certain sense of, I don't know, solemnity to the event. We've been blessed in the past with beautiful sunny days, but there was something unique, and I think even, I would dare say, special about it this year. So thank you for that, and thank you to the town, everyone that came out that day. The only other thing I have to offer today is it's Thanksgiving, so enjoy your families and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Mr. McLemus.
But I just want to say, Lou, I thought you did a great job emceying it, and it was energized with that weather. It was a lot of energy there, and it was exciting. Thank you.
I don't have anything other than to say thank you to Lou. I thought it was just another fine display for our veterans, and I also wanted to compliment all of the speakers that day. I thought that there was quite a diversity in terms of the comments that were made. And obviously, anytime, you know, there's a speaking program, you know, you want to be an active listener to everybody, but I thought from poems to, you know, the music choices, to the people that were involved in presenting the wreath to the memorial there, I thought it was a very nice, well-thought-out program. So, thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, before we get to important dates, I would like to advise the board that on Friday at 5:07 precisely, we received notice via an email from, Kinder Morgan has filed their certificate of application with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission for the Northeast Energy Direct Project. The application has assigned a docket number CP16-21-00. So at this point, it's, I've had consultation with Dan Deutsch from Council's office, and also Paul Looney, who's been tracking this. The, our understanding at this point is that FERC, the commission that is receiving this request, will go through a review process, and then review the application, and then confirm whether the application meets all of their requirements, and then will issue a notice of application, which will be published in the Central Register. Once that happens, we will then, we being the town, have 21 days to respond as an intervenor, so we're in the process of making sure that that documentation is ready to go when that clock begins.
To that end, I saw, and it's not official, please don't take this as official word, but I just saw some dialogue that perhaps the route that was in their application was a slight change from what we had seen heretofore. So as we go forward here, and get wind of how the application, what the application was, certainly we want to look at what that line was. And my understanding was that it was moved away from some residences on the west side, and that it's still, you know, still traveling right through the Benevento and the blasting area. So anyway, again, it's not official, and I just wanted to make sure that we're reviewing that as the opportunity presents itself. Important dates?
Important dates, we have November 20, through November 28th is the Curbside Collection of Yard Waste. November 25th is Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 26th is Thanksgiving Day, Town Office is closed. November 27th, Town Office is closed, other than Public Safety. November 28th, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. December 2nd, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 3rd is the Santa's Workshop Town Hall, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. December 5th is the Breakfast with Santa. December 5th is the Christmas Tree Lighting at Town Common. December 5th is another Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November, I'm sorry, December 5th and 6th is the Festival of Trees, Lenovo Hall. Also, December 6th is the Holiday Social, Harndon Tavern, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. December 10th is the next Facilities Master Plan Committee, right here, Room 7, Room 9, at 7:00 PM. And then December 14th is the next Board of Selectments meeting.
Very well. Unless there's anything else, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Thank you, good night, and happy Thanksgiving.